Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 22, 2025 Pittsburgh Commission to Order. Please join me in the flat's flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite Debbie Correll up from the Community of Christ Church to share some words of inspiration for us.
Thank you. Will you pray with me? Almighty God, the churches of our community have traveled the Linton journey this past week, ending with the resurrection of Christ on Easter Sunday. Jesus is the hope for a new life, new opportunities, and hope for all humanity. This evening, we pray for these leaders of this community. We pray that their hearts and minds are open to the needs of the many, that their leadership will strengthen our community while bringing peace, love, hope, and joy to all walks of life, the comfortable, the uncomfortable, the young, and the old. We pray their service to this community continue to bless it and bless their families. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray this. Amen.
Thank you. Bye. Enjoy the rest of your dinner. I would also note that Commissioner Height is joining us via phone. Moving into public input, I would open for public input. If you have something you'd like to share, please come forward, state your name, address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes or less.
Sure. Last time I was here, I said how great you guys were, and it didn't turn out so bad, so good. Remember? I wear a few little hats, and the first one I want to pass out is for Shasta Power.
Would you like to share who you are?
Oh, I'm Melissa Rhodes, and I'm from Arma, and I work with Shasta Power as their community engagement person. They are the utility solar farm that has plans on coming into Crawford County, and it's anywhere from a $500 to $700 million investment, and it's going to be a two-year build. Employ about 200 to 250 people during that build, so it's going to impact Pittsburgh a bit. And we are sitting right now in a county-issued moratorium until the comprehensive survey is complete, which at this time, we're still sitting at about 600 people that have responded. So I would love it if people out there would respond to that so we could kind of move on to production and permits. I do want to pass this out, and I will do that in a second. The other hat is we have launched Southeast Kansas Rural Development Association. It's an economic nonprofit. We're working with Point Forward with Washington School. I would like to invite you guys out for a private tour of Washington School, which is a childcare center. Great marriage between public and private investment at 5:30 on Thursday. And you'll have the opportunity to pledge for community service tax credits. I'm going to come back in a little bit, probably in a week or so. We are working on the Books Building. You're aware of that, next door to Sarah Lurie's. We're going to be doing an E. Hill grant for that so we can get the roof fixed and some other stuff. So I just want you to be aware that at some point in time, I'm going to come back and ask for a letter of support to go with their application, and I think that's it.
Good job.
I know. You guys do such a good job. I just want to hand these, and I'm going to leave some on the table. And you can catch us at the farm show. We'll be there for three days.
Inside.
Inside. We're inside of the air conditioning.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public input, and would like to move into Pittsburgh positive. With today being Earth Day, I thought it was a good marriage to recognize the Southeast Kansas Recycling Center. And I'm going to go ahead and come down because right after that is a proclamation. And tonight, representing the board of the Southeast Kansas Recycling Center is Jeremy Johnson. Jeremy, you would like to come forward? So many of you might know that...
I have a companion. He's helping.
Many of you may know that the organization kind of recently underwent a refresh. And so if you want to speak to that, and then we'd also like to invite Monica Moran up. She spearheaded the refresh, and maybe she could share the community involvement in that and maybe with the goal.
Yeah, absolutely. Cool. Well, thank you to Dawn and the city for having us here tonight. So I'm the board chair of Southeast Kansas Recycling Center, and as Dawn indicated, we recently completed what we dubbed a reset 2025, thanks here to the help of Monica Moran, who does that kind of thing for fun, wrangling volunteers and such. And Southeast Kansas Recycling has been around for nearly 30 years now and has largely operated as a volunteer-driven organization. It is thanks to volunteers that we get the things done that we do, especially the big lifts that we have, like cleaning up the property and making sure that things are spiffy and looking good, public-facing. And so, I mean, it is the strength of those volunteers and the willingness for them to show up and help sort trash and pick things up that speaks to the value of the organization, and without them, we would not be able to do the things that we do. So thank you all that contributed.
And I'd just like to thank, we had probably over 80 volunteers that helped in the cold Saturdays and in the afternoons. Really want to say thanks so much to the city staff who helped with their expertise. And, you know, we're really lucky here in Pittsburgh to have a nonprofit recycling center. And I think we all really need to be aware that it just takes a minute for a really good resource to go away, and we all need to help in some way, whatever that may be. And I really appreciate the work of the board to really look towards the future and what we're doing with the recycling center, and thanks to everybody who did some pretty yucky jobs. I appreciate the, I called in some favors, but also met some new friends, so it was a good thing. So thanks to Jeremy for his volunteering to be board chair. It's important to recognize the late Dr. Triplet, because of his vision, dedication, hours and hours that got the recycling center going.
I was going to say, he was a driving force for those 30 years. I would like to note, I'm the first president to take in, to step in after he stepped down. So I try to keep that weight in mind as I help out with the recycling center and try to move us forward.
I'll do my thing. Thank you. Thanks for recognizing us. Thanks, Michael. All right. I have a proclamation I'd like to have Toby to come up. All right. So whereas Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated event that encourages tree planting and care, and whereas Jay Sterling Morton first proposed a tree planting holiday to be called Arbor Day at the meeting of the Nebraska State Board of Agriculture, and whereas the first Arbor Day was celebrated on April 10, 1872, and it is estimated that more than 1 million trees were planted in Nebraska on that day, and whereas during the 1870s, other states passed legislation to observe Arbor Day as the tradition began in schools nationwide in 1882, and whereas trees in our city increased property values, enhanced economic vitality of business areas, and fueled by our community. Now therefore, I, Dawn McNehey, Mayor of City of Pittsburgh, do hereby proclaim April 25 as Arbor Day in Pittsburgh and encourage citizens of Pittsburgh and our neighborhoods to join in the celebration and the observance of this special day set aside for tree planting. And I want to give it to Toby and his staff because you're the...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, you did care for trees.
We will have a tree planting when we get to Dr. Irwin.
There you go. Here you go.
Thank you.
All right, moving into the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Doc. All those in favor, roll call vote. Brooks?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
McNehey? Yes. Munsell?
Yes.
Sigley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Special presentation, Economic Development Quarterly Report. Director of Economic Development Blake Benson and Pittsburgh State University Associate Vice President, Research and Economic Development, does that fit on your business card?
No.
Wes Streeter will present the Quarterly Economic Development Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. It is a pleasure to provide kind of a year-in-review economic development report, and I think I can speak for Pittsburgh State and the chamber when I say thank you so much for the opportunity that the city affords us to be a part of this economic development team. Really is a unique approach that Darren began putting together back in 2012. It's been supported by every city commission since then, and I think it's working, and we're going to talk about that tonight. So thank you for the opportunity to serve in that role. So what are those results? Want to say anything about this?
One thing I do want to point out on this, and first off, thank you for letting us present in front of you this evening. So 152 million increase since 2023, so about a 21% increase. So that just, I just want to point that number out, but you can kind of see the pie itself. There's a lot of different sectors that are represented here, so.
And Madam Mayor, I'll point out, obviously, $730 million is significant for a community of our size. What's even more noteworthy is how diversified that is. Much like your retirement portfolio, you want your economy to be diversified as well because it helps you weather those economic storms. So when you see how diverse Pittsburgh's economy is, that's obviously a great thing.
And one thing I just want to add, so Dr. Michael Davidson with Pittsburgh State University helps our team a lot as far as getting data and statistics and things like that.
He's a huge, huge help, a great asset for our community. Some numbers, this really, commissioners, is why we all do what we do. You can see the rise in average median wage just over the last three years. It's over 30%. Inflation has been a little bit of that, but that's about 19 to 20%. But that number there in front of you means people in our community have more money in their pockets. I think you see that in your sales tax collections increase over the last few years, but that's obviously a good number to throw out. Another number that Dr. Davidson came up with was the rise in middle-income households. You can see how well that Pittsburgh is outpacing not only the county and the state, but also the federal or the national numbers as well. So 18% rise in the number of middle-income households in our community. Some other numbers, bank deposits continue to go up. The number on the far right there, I don't know if that was Dr. Davidson or if that was Jay Byers that found that one. Obviously, that is a good indicator of how well our local residents are doing. The fact that 75% of them have a prime FICO score, I believe that's the highest that's ever been recorded in our community. But again, hopefully, it means that the means of living for the average Pittsburgh resident has continued to rise over the last several years.
So I just want to point out a few things, a few initiatives that we've been working on. As far as the university itself goes, we've launched a new division, Research and Economic Development, that the mayor pointed out, as far as very lengthy title. But a couple of things I want to talk about, so the Blueprint for Literacy, that's probably something that you've heard about or talked about. With our work within the university, we help push that forward to help support our catchment area, which is about a 13-county area, to support kids that need help, that extra help with reading. Because we do, we know we have some high school kids graduating not being able to read at the basic level. So that's what is pushing forward of that. Now, funding for that did get kind of stifled right now for next year, but one thing that's really not known is they've, because of the work that we're doing at Pittsburgh State and Dr. Hereford in the Center for Reading, they've given us $321,000 to pilot a program this year to help with this initiative. And what that will do is help us hire some literacy coaches that will go out, you know, within the local school districts and things like that to help train teachers and show support for those districts.
And I'll also mention real quickly Molly Von Garner, who was longtime Senate Education Chair in the Kansas Senate. who was longtime Senate Education Chair in the Kansas Senate, was instrumental in that Blueprint for Literacy. She's now on the Pittsburgh State team. But thank you to Molly for, for all your work on that.
And I'm going to, so go down to a couple of things that everybody's kind of heard about and talked about. So if you know where our Tyler Research Center out by the baseball field at PSU. So that area soon is going to start looking a lot different and more full. So a few projects, the first one actually that got talked about and worked on there is probably going to actually be the last one that gets finished, but the Prove Out Facility. So the National Institute for Science and Technology came to Pittsburgh and looked at the capabilities of our Tyler Research Center and the things that they're doing and saw, said, if you build something like this, it, it will bring industry to town. Okay? And so one of the things that helped with that, now we know Eagle Pitcher, so that's on the list. They were going to come, they're in Pittsburgh, they were going to advance their facilities in Pittsburgh. And so the partnership that we have with, with the city and the chamber, and some people got around the table, our expertise that we have at the Tyler Research Center is specific to battery, some battery technology along with bio-based materials as well. And so that was very instrumental on the placement on where they're going to be, which is right next door to our Tyler Research Center. And that, I, number of jobs that that's going to create is probably 50-plus high-paying jobs for the city of Pittsburgh. The KBI partnership, okay? So that is another, so same, same type of land. So first off, I want to thank, so the, the city commissioners for approving the, we brought it to the EDAC. Remember Bob Stewart, big tall, KBI guy, used to be FBI guy, came and presented at the EDAC and then in front of the commission. And that 84,000 that we got from the EDAC, that, that funding allowed us to create a blueprint basically to take to legislators and lobby for money. So now because of that, we've secured 40 million for the facility that KBI is going to do. And once it's done, it'll be about a $55 million project. And in that facility, it's going to be KBI. The Attorney General is going to have space there. The FBI is going to have, have space there. The Pittsburgh Police Department is going to have a presence there. The University Police Department is going to have a presence there. And then we're, that will also allow us to look at actual workforce development that needs that we have in our area. So we can look at some curriculum development things that we can do with criminal justice and things like that. So that's a, that's a huge piece of that. And then the last thing I'm going to come back to.
Can I mention something else about Eagle Pitcher?
Yep, sorry about that.
Commissioners, I think, one more thing on Eagle Pitcher. I think it really encapsulates why this teamwork approach is so important. Because obviously with the new Eagle Pitcher facility, Darren did an incredible amount of work, as did Henry and Matt Bacon and obviously you as commissioners. When Eagle Pitcher was looking for that new location, they contacted us at the chamber because we had a longstanding relationship with Eagle Pitcher. Obviously, then we connected them with our city partners and, and, and made that happen. But even going back 20 years, the only reason that Pittsburgh, that Eagle Pitcher has had a facility in Pittsburgh for the last 20 years is because of Pittsburgh State. Because Dr. Tom Bryant, when he was the president of PSU, had a relationship with Steve Westfall. Heard Steve was looking for a new community to locate an Eagle Pitcher facility, and that's how that ended up there. So I just think that's one great example of why this teamwork approach is so important.
Yeah. And that last part said the Forge Grant, but I'm going to come back to that because we're going to talk about it in a second. So our Small Business Development Center. So it's a service that's located at Pittsburgh State Downtown, but it serves a 13-county region. Okay? And so the top, the top numbers, I won't read through them to you. But that is our Crawford County numbers as far as unique clients and client hours that they've spent working and giving small business advice. So what, what would you do if you were a small business and you have an idea and you don't know how to start a company? Some people might not, you know, get online, look, things like that. But they're going to help you set up an LLC and things like that, you know, little step-by-step by step. Okay? And it's a, a service with no fee. Okay? So that is a great benefit to our community.
And, and I will say, obviously, the recommendations that we bring you from the EDAC, really only about half of the, the initial contacts that we get from people interested in starting a business or growing one make it that far. A lot of them go to the Small Business Development Center that are urging. And Small Business Development Center will either help them make sure that it's ready to go or sometimes they realize they're not as ready as they thought they were. But they do that before they spend a lot of time and a lot of money. So we send everybody that we can to the Small Business Development Center because it's a great resource.
And then this next one, I kind of want to go to the, the Forge Grant that was mentioned. So the State Department of Commerce awarded us a grant. And so they basically said, here's this money, think of an idea of what you can do with this. And so we wanted to diffuse this back into the community. And so giving away mini-grants to small businesses. And some of these, and when I say mini-grants, no more than $5,000. And that does make a difference to some businesses. And some, it might make the difference of if they're going to make it or not make it. Okay? There are stipulations and there's a whole process as far as applying for this, these grants. And Pittsburgh State is not the ones giving out the grants. We have a third-party board that looks at all the applications and decides who get them, who gets them. And so I know this is live streamed. So anybody can still go to the SBDC, go on Pitt State's website, and they can look at how they can apply for these grants. Just call our office and we can set you up with how to do that, so.
Can you give us a couple of examples of ones that have been awarded?
So I, I won't give specific businesses, but like one business needed a particular piece of equipment to keep something cold. Okay? So they have to match too. So we're not just, so they have to match a certain amount of the funding. Okay? And then other businesses, they needed a certain software to keep their business going. Okay? And so they applied for the grant that could help purchase that software. Another company had software, they didn't know how to use it. And so they needed technical training on that software. And so that allowed them to do that as well.
I noticed you said the Center for Graphene. Is the production of graphene or research on graphene?
Research on graphene, yeah. Production and the small amount.
Small amounts.
Yeah. So, so this, like I said, I won't read through them to you, but NEMA. So that's our National Institute for Materials Advancement. So that is at the house of the Tyler Research Center. Just in this past year, about a half a million dollars in added equipment. And, and what does that mean, added equipment? So testing equipment and things like that. So somebody in industry, they're not going to spend $250,000 on a machine they're going to use twice. But, so we have equipment like this that they would utilize our services for things like that. And then just some of the numbers that we talked about last year, some of our post-docs and some more hires and student researchers that we have out there at the Tyler Research Center. And then we've kind of already talked about some of the other, other funding streams that we've been brought in either federally or from the state. So, so this, can I walk or do I have to stay here?
Well, we got a better chance of hearing you if you have to.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, here we go. I got a little mouse. Okay, so this is the area I was talking about. So right here is the current Tyler Research Center that I'm circling around. And then added on here is the Prove Out Facility. You see the next two white buildings? So that's where the Eagle Pitcher land is going to be. And that's, I, not positive, I'm pretty sure that's a one building that Eagle Pitcher is going to be building. And then on further down here is where the KBI facility is going to be. And then for reference, back here is names and numbers, and then the ball field is right here. So as you can see, I, I don't know if you're familiar with some of the things at Wichita, in Wichita, but their innovation campus. So they basically, they call it their golf course picture. Okay? And so they had a golf course. In one picture, 10 years later, that golf course is Innovation Campus with all their innovative buildings as far as the things with Boeing and Spirit and all those companies that, that are with them. And so this is, I would consider our, which is impressive for a town like this, our mini little golf course, so, which we have a mini golf course, so.
Very nice. Some individual projects, Pitt Plastics, 200,000 square foot expansion is nearing completion. This actually came about due to one of the business retention and expansion visits that we do on behalf of the city from three years ago. So it's great to see a, a longtime local company continue to grow. And obviously, the only reason Gene Bicknell came to Pittsburgh was to go to Pittsburgh State. So it's the reason Pitt Plastics is here. You're aware of this, Heritage Tractor, that was another project we brought to the, to the city. Three, 30,000 square foot addition, they're now in the city limits, a great addition. Last year's City Employer of the Year, as a matter of fact, and Pitt Plastics will be this year's. Invent Enclosures, it used to be Atkinson Industries. It's one of Pittsburgh's oldest companies. They've been here for 108 years. They've gone, undergone a couple of name changes recently. That Invent name actually won't even become official until next week is how new that is. But they've added 20,000 square feet night shift that has added somewhere between 40 to 50 new jobs. And they continue to grow. They're doing a lot of work for the data center industry. So still looking at growth opportunities at Invent. PRG Professional on Rouse. The city's had the opportunity to, to partner with them on a couple of growth opportunities. Tyler Harrell and, and his team do a great job. We brought to you an incentive request a few months ago, and that one is nearing completion. So great to see that one. This one, obviously, the city team, everybody has, has been a big part of this. The town's really been excited about it. Recently did a ribbon cutting for Five Below. And about the same time, Rack Room Shoes opened up in Ulta coming this, this summer.
My 13-year-old's favorite part of town.
I'm sure, absolutely. Call that economic development.
Yeah.
Spend dad's money.
Yep.
Some additional projects that we brought you in 2024 that were sizable as well were Lorenz House Development, obviously, and the old Audacious Boutique Building, S E K Urgent Care, the Cousins, new facility on Centennial, obviously, the, the C H C Downtown Clinic, and now a downtown location for Canar Eye Care. Well, obviously draw attention to that bottom number. Over $36 million in projects in 2024, commissioners. And all we had to leverage from the RLF to get that was less than half a million dollars, which represents 1.3% of that total.
So just to be clear, that 36 million is 2024?
Correct. That's just 2024. So it doesn't, it doesn't include Gorilla Rising, doesn't include Eagle Pitcher, doesn't include anything in 2025. That's just for 2024. So I know obviously being prudent with taxpayer dollars is, is obviously a priority for you. And when you can spend that kind of money and get a 98.7% return, I think that's something that we would all like to see on our own investments. But, but obviously, we're, we're pretty proud of that number. So as, as positive as 2024 was, these are the projects that are coming down the pike in 2025. Wes, I don't know if you want to add anything about Gorilla Rising specifically?
Yeah, I mean, with Gorilla Rising coming, we can see that, you know, it's, it's happening with the takedown of a building and then it looks like a pond right now. But I think they're pumping it out. And also the, the Best Hotel, that is being worked on daily. And the first floor of the Best Hotel is also going to have so unique opportunities for some retail space and things like that to generate some sales tax and things like that. So we're excited about this project as well.
Obviously Eagle Pitcher, Wes talked about the KBI facility. They're adjacent to the university and the Prove Out Facility. The Wildcat Data Center project, that one's moving very quickly. Evergy has all their work done. And the Wildcat Data Center anticipates being operational by the end of May. So that one is, is moving very quickly as well. That, just a reminder, that's going to be a big revenue generator for, for the city as well. Not only with the sales tax on electricity, but also the franchise fee that the city collects. We're excited about the revenue that that will come to the, the city. Apex Stages is, is, the stage industry has been growing since the, the end of COVID. Obviously, that was not a good time for concerts and stages. But since then, Todd Allison and his team have continued to grow and looking at some growth opportunities. And will most likely be approaching the EDAC and the city commission in the month of May. So we look forward to bringing you more on that. And obviously, you're well aware of the investment the city is making in the wastewater treatment plant that will serve our community for so many years. So. So with, with that, commissioners, obviously, we will stand for any questions. But, but it is truly an honor to, to serve on this economic development team that the, the city has assembled. This really is an innovative way to, to coordinate economic development. And honestly, when developers or, or businesses are interested in our community, they really don't care who does what. They just want to know that the community is going to work together and, and get them what they need. And I think the fact that we have this teamwork approach, you see the, the results. And we're, we're getting quite a bit of attention around the state for just how pro-growth our community is and, and some of the things that we're making happen, especially given that we're a community of our size. So with that, thank you for the opportunity, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? No?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Good job, guys.
Moving on to consider the following. A 2025 Amendment to the Economic Development Services Contract, Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce. Consider staff requests to amend the Economic Development Services Contract with the Pittsburgh Area Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor, commissioners, this is the annual contract with, the first one is for the Chamber of Commerce. It's the 12th year, I believe. When I first got here, we went from a director to this model. It's worked out obviously very well. We're fortunate Blake has remained in the community for this time and his staff has developed over the many years to be able to really do a lot more than just manage the inventory of buildings we have in the industrial parks and things like that. But Blake's just, through his job and all the volunteering and things he does, he's really made the connection. So it's easy for those people to call him, find him. And he's, he's very quick with the calls to us when we need to. And he has a lot of good connections, obviously. He's a Board of Regents member, so very fortunate with this. You see the results up there. Last year, the contract, like I said, well, I think it was 11th year. This will be the 12th year. We're recommending raising it to $65,000 annually. And be happy to answer any questions. And obviously Blake is still here.
Raising from?
From 55.
55. So could you share a little bit about the city's discernment in terms of both these entities meeting their benchmarks or their requirements?
Well, basically, we've got scopes of work with each of them. The easiest way to think about it is Blake's contract is to focus on the existing businesses and, and towards growth, which I think with the job creation and the, and the, we, we literally get a report every month from our per-bidg group in the basement of new, new construction. And that's what we use to build a spreadsheet that we, that you saw, I think it was the first slide. And then all of that volume is reflected in Michael Davidson's quarterly reports that he does on the economy. The next contract that you'll see will kind of be the other part of economic development, which is really growing things, entrepreneurism, starting. We've, we've got a gentleman, it's a Pitt State grad, that's going to be, that has purchased the Southwest Industrial Park from us. And we'll be putting a, a facility out there. So it's, it's those kind of opportunities for people that are either more tied to the university or in some cases, and we get a lot of questions on this, the university is actually one of our biggest developers, whether it's retail or commercials. So I think that's where the two pieces come together. We try to look at it holistically. And, and like I said, the scopes of services that they have will continue to be the same scope of services for this year.
Move to accept.
Let's second it.
Been moved by Doc, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B, 2025 Amendment to Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement, Pittsburgh State University. Consider staff requests to amend the Business Development and Innovation Services Agreement with Pittsburgh State University. Any different questions on that? Their motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Moved by Doc, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item C, MBL Development Company, Villas at Wellington Springs Development. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, EDAC, to approve a loan in the amount of $405,000 to MBL Development at 1% interest with the loan to be amortized over 20 years with a seven-year term to develop the Villas at Wellington Springs, a senior living facility on Bradshaw Way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first of all, thank you for, for your support. Moving forward, this is a project that the EDAC did consider back at its March meeting. And we're now ready to deliver a recommendation from them. You, you said it pretty well right there, Madam Mayor, on what exactly the, the proposed project is. It would be a senior living facility on Bradshaw Way in southeast Pittsburgh. So to orient those that are watching, this would be just northeast, or pardon me, northwest of Renew Medical and Spa, right off of Centennial. It would be dubbed Villas at Wellington Springs, and it would offer independent living facilities for those 55 and over. So the company that we have been working with on this one is MBL Development. They have a successful track record of similar projects in this part of the country. They have a successful track record of similar projects in this part of the country, and they can tell you a little bit more about that. But I can come up in a few minutes and talk about the recommendation from the EDAC. But at this point, I'll ask Kim Lingel, who is representing MBL tonight, and we've worked with Kim for several months on this, to tell you a little bit more about Wellington, Villas at Wellington Springs. Come on up, Kim.
First of all, Mr. Benson and Mr. Streeter, I hope to be part of your 2025 report with our $24 million project that we're presenting with you tonight. I believe in your, I'm Kim Lingel with MBL Development. I believe in your package, you got a little information about us, et cetera. Real quick, I'll tell you, we've been doing this for 34 years. That's why I've got the gray hair. Most recently, we finished in Carthage, Missouri. We've been two phases in Carthage, Missouri, is what we're doing here. We've done about 80 units in Carthage. If you're familiar with Carthage, you remember the old airport in Carthage, if some of you, whatever. We built where the old airport was there. It's called Villas at Myers Park. We just completed a project, Parsons, Kansas, back in September. We're in construction now over in Nevada, Missouri. But we're pretty much centralized in Missouri and Kansas. We've got a couple of projects in Iowa. So that tells you a little bit about us. We've done about 37 different projects over the years, all been very successful. Senior housing, that's all we do, is independent senior housing. This is a unique thing, scenario from that, is the layout, and it is, we've got a phase one of 40 units, and then we're going to propose, if I hit the right button on enter.
You going to go to the next slide?
Next slide?
Yep.
Slide. Then this will be phase two. So we will have two phases, phase one and phase two, each one of 40 units. Within this complex, we're going to have a community building. There will actually be two community buildings, one in each phase. And inside that community building will be 3,000 square feet. That'll be a full kitchen, we'll have a workout center. And also, I want to let you tell you, in that community building, we build a safe house. What I mean by safe house is a tornado shelter. It'll be about 700 square feet. We call them the concrete bunkers. So there is going to be, each one of those will have one, which has gotten to be a big, big, big item over the years, as you know. So we've been doing it probably for the last seven years, you know, from that standpoint. This is independent, but we do provide a lot of services. What I mean by services is we will go out and try to get various of the sundry, like we have a hairdressing station. The ladies will come in and do hairdressing. We've actually had, we've had several mobile dentist people come in with vans that come into the center. So we try to bring in the services for the folks. About 50% of the independent living folks won't have a car, so we're also going to provide some transportation, et cetera. Also, the city obviously has transportation as well. The other thing that I'm hoping that I can get in Mr. Benson's and Mr. Streeter's economic report, I will tell you that approximately of here, of the 40 units, 20 houses will be sold in each complex. So it'll be about 40 houses will be sold in your community. And I've done that study. We did it in Carthage, I've done it in Sedalia, Missouri, and other places, and that's really about the rationale. So you're going to get an economic impact that you don't see that you don't have.
So clarify that, relatives moving, I mean, what's the correlation there?
Mrs. Jones has lost a sibling, and she wants to downsize, and so she wants to sell her house. They don't want to take care of their house anymore. They don't want to do the lawn care anymore. They don't want to do all that type of thing.
So it's a migration from?
Correct. Exactly. Exactly, you know, from that thing. That's just very, 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 very typical. You'll see somebody, you'll see a lot of folks will come in from outside of Pittsburgh to move in to be closer to grandchildren. That's a real big key. They may be coming from KC, they may be coming from Carthage, who knows? But they'll come into the community and move in to be closer to grandkids, that type of thing. This is, I'll show you some pictures. We did one in Olathe.
So do you have income guidelines for your?
Yes, we do. There'll be, but it's a, we call it mixed use. We'll have market rate, and then we'll have mixed income of 60% of median income. So it'll be a mixture. That's why we call it a mixed use.
Right arrow.
Right arrow, got that one. This is a project in Olathe, Kansas. This is a slab-on-grade. We do everything slab-on-grade. This is a 908 square foot unit, two bedrooms. We do all concrete, as you can tell. And you can see, we try to set this up where you, it's this individual unit, so, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Jones can sit out on their patio, et cetera. Here's another picture. We do carports instead of garages. Like I said earlier, my history has told me that only about 50% of the folks will have a car. So that's why we do the individual carports for the folks there as well. This is just another showing the complex itself. I got all this. I brought this because I thought this would be important since you're considering loaning MBL money. This is a letter, I don't know if this was in your packet, but this is basically a credit reference letter from my bank stating that we're in good standing. I thought that would be kind of an important slide to show, but I didn't, was that in the packet? I don't know what that says, but basically, this is a letter saying we're okay. Any questions?
I have a couple. What are these places going to rent for?
Good question. I'm going to give you round numbers because of interest rates, okay? I'm going to say everything's going to be under $1,000.
Yeah, I want it, so people at home can hear.
Yeah, they're going to be under $1,000. We're going to be in the range of $800 to $900.
All right. And my next, now you have some units, you said, in Parsons?
Yes, sir.
And where else in Kansas? Over in?
Olathe.
Olathe.
This past one, can I go backwards, Blake?
Yeah. I was looking at your funding sources here.
Right.
The federal low-income housing tax credits.
Correct.
And state low-income housing tax credits. Have you applied for those tax credits?
Yes, we have.
And you're successful?
Yes.
Well, the reason I ask, we've had another project about a month ago or so that came to us. Sounds like similar to this, they're going to be applying for those same tax credits. And you won't know till, is it August?
Yes, sir.
So.
Yes, sir.
I just wonder, will you be, if you're not granted those, will this development happen or without that?
Correct. It's just a source, yeah, correct. It's like going to the bank. We're going to the bank and we got turned down. But I will tell you, I've been pretty successful over the years, you know, from that standpoint.
Well, the reason I ask, I just wonder with two different sources applying for the same.
Well, Chuck, I'll be more than happy to address that. Let me, so you completely understand it. There'll be two different rounds of applications. When I see, I will not be competing against that group, okay? They've, and they'll, we're only competing in the rural housing group. That group is competing in what they call unique opportunities. So we're not even in the same, we're not even competing against each other. We're applying, but we're not competing.
And what do you say, two rounds if you don't get approved, the first round?
We could go into, we could, we'd apply again. We could apply again, absolutely.
When's the second round then?
Be it first next year.
Next year?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So Commissioners, if there are no more questions for Kim, the recommendation from the EDAC, good job. The EDAC recommended a repayable loan of $405,000 at a 1% interest rate, as the mayor mentioned. The loan would be amortized over 20 years, but it would have a seven-year term, meaning the city would be made whole within seven years. In addition to that, MBL is also requesting a, the sales tax exemption component of an industrial revenue bond. Sometimes we bring you industrial revenue bonds that have a sales tax component and a property tax exemption. What they've chosen to do is the sales tax exemption component will help them on their application. So that's what they're requesting right now. I anticipate the other project that Commissioner Muncell mentioned, they will most likely be coming to you in May with a similar request for that sales tax exemption because you get additional points on your KHRC application if you have that sales tax exemption piece. So what we're bringing to you tonight is the recommendation for the $405,000 loan, 1% interest, seven-year term, and the sales tax exemption on the construction materials for the project.
Blake, on that loan, I know in the past, we've had 10% of costs for developers, and they go, that get that money at the completion of the project. How is this loan, will they get, if they get all the tax credits and everything they need, will that 400, whatever it was, be given right at the start, or is it?
Yes, sir. It would be given at the start, and they would repay it. Again, they would have seven years to repay it. Mr. Lingel has indicated they would most likely repay that earlier, because especially if they have plans for a phase two. But all that would be repaid to the city with the additional interest as well.
So this is a loan versus some of the grants?
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions on item C? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve. Second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Doc. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.